All right, it is April third, five forty-five P M. We're gonna call this Finance Committee meeting to order. Council, our present, our council members Barker, Hauser, Marmy, Rat sitting in for Lang and Blind sitting in for Hotinger. First item, the unappropriated balance of the general fund is at two million four hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. The cash balance of the budget stabilization fund is that one million three hundred and eleven dollars and uh one million three hundred eleven thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. First item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to apply for financial support from the state of Ohio twenty twenty-three nature works grant.
This grant is going to be directed at the Polder Pool. We're looking to receive funding to place two shade structures, one over the baby pool area and the other over the eating area. First come in.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Barker, second by Hauser. Any questions and or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor send us on full council signify and say an aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion passes five zero. Next item is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit an application to the United States Department of Justice for fiscal year twenty twenty-three cops hiring program.
The Division of Police would like to apply for five officers. The grant operates on a reimbursement basis at seventy-five federal, seventy-five percent federal pickup, twenty-five percent local. The maximum per officer is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so any cost over that, the city would.
I have a question.
Sure.
Wait, is there some like tenure they have to like be with at least for a certain amount of times or be knowledgeable for the grant if they have to stay in the department for a certain amount of time?
Well, it's not the officer. The city has to make a commitment that, you know, they will keep a certain level of officers on staff, but the individual one.
Yeah, what's the dollar amount balance that the city is responsible for after the grant?
Well, there's a twenty-five percent match, but any cost beyond that the city will be responsible for because when you, when you're looking to hire someone, okay, you may have one officer entry level who has single health insurance. You may have another one who has family health insurance. So, you know, it's capped at, as I said, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's still a great buy-in. It's a highly competitive grant and, you know, it would be worthwhile for the city to pursue it.
Absolutely, yeah.
I have a motion by Barker.
Second.
Second by Blind. Any further questions and or discussion? Yeah, I'll just indicate that this is a great program. Uh even though we have to put in some match and we may uh put in additional funds, it just uh relieves our general fund for a period of time in order to uh do other things for our safety forces. So this is a great thing. If we can, if we get accepted, it is very hard. So appreciate you doing it.
Thank you.
Uh seeing no further discussion, all those in favor send us on full council signify and say an aye. Those opposed, same sign. The motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a request for appropriation in the amount of eight thousand eighty-six dollars fifty-five cents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Mr. Chairman, as you're well aware, when we submit the budget to you at the end of the calendar year for the following year, we have to guesstimate uh this portion of the workers' comp. When we get the bill, which was on March twenty-third, it was uh this amount of eight thousand eighty-six dollars and fifty-five cents short. So asking uh that you fund this so we're in compliance with workers' comp.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Barker, second by Hauser. Any questions and or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor send us on full council signify and say an aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request for appropriation amount of fifty-three thousand thirty-one dollars.
Thank you. Um we are wanting to move some grant money around to purchase additional SCRAM alcohol monitoring units and GPS units.
Uh I misspoke, because this is a disappropriation.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Barker.
Second.
Second by Rat. Questions and or discussion? Seeing those none, all those in favor sentence us on full council signify and say an aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion passes five zero. Now, uh request for an appropriation for the same amount. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Barker. I didn't hear who seconded.
I think it was all good.
Saying by Rat. Questions and or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor send us on full council signify and say an aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety for the city of Newark, Ohio to reduce the lien previously placed um against the property located as and known as Eleven Moore Street, Newark, Ohio.
Point and quarter. Yes, there was another uh appropriation on that lax legislation for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Name round. I just don't have that. Yeah. I don't have the um for the two hundred and forty-eight thousand section four.
You don't have.
No. For that one. All right, we'll come back to that. So we'll uh the item is a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service from the city of Newark, Ohio to reduce the lien previously placed against the property located at and known as Eleven Moore Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um as stated in the ordinance, uh this is truly some extraordinary circumstances in regards to this property. Uh in my four years that I've been affiliated with property maintenance, I don't ever remember bringing this sort of legislation forward. Um the reason we're bringing it forward to you is the lien was created as an act of council. So in order to amend the lien, we needed an act of council to do that. Uh couple of points I'd like to uh to bring up is that uh this is a reduction and not an elimination of the lien. Um there is no cost to the city and there is no refund to the city. So we're not refunding the money. Um we're just uh we're just asking for a reduction on on this. Um we've got our property official Joe Pauls here tonight. We're thankful to answer any questions on this.
Then I offer a motion.
I'll second that. Motion by Barker. Second by Hauser. Any questions and or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor send us on full council signify and say an aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Uh next item on the agenda, we will go back to the appropriation.
She took my sheet.
Yeah. In the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
There's two items, uh two funds. Uh this is really funding for our uh laundry system for our distribution collection pump stations. Uh where you're redoing the water side or water stations and a project and our plant. We discovered that we have some issues with kind of as as we built this now with the kind of piece field that them out. So this is kind of trying to get everything kind of on the same system so it works a little bit better. Uh this is just where we're getting gathered data to test which pumps are running, which pumps are not running. Uh you know, where the power's at, all that kind of stuff. Um unfortunately, the trees have grown over the years and our radio system is not working as well. It used to work. And so this is a little bit higher powered system. It's cellular backup that we don't have to worry about. Or trees getting in the way and other things and uh and be able to follow the system. So this is just the water or the wastewater and the stormwater portion of that. We have the stormwater pump stations as well throughout the city. So fifteen, seventeen sanitary stations. I think it's seven storm stations.
I have a motion by Barker, second by Blind. Any questions and or discussion? Yes, Mr. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just comment. I'm glad to see Roger that on the uh Finance Committee meeting tonight, the largest appropriation asset, this will be your your last committee meeting. Do this one more time, right? Do you have one more?
No, so I had to do it.
All right, good. Well, thank you for all your work and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor send us on full council signify and say an aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion passes five zero. With that, this Finance Committee meeting stands adjourned. Next up is service.
Uh Jeff and Jerry are here.
Oh, Jeff right there. Mark, Mark, open and share. What he's watching for sure.
All right, we'll call it a servant committee meeting in order. Those friends and myself, Brad, Parker, Blind, Harris, and Mr. Marmy sitting in for Mr. Hotinger. Uh these first items on the agenda are all going to be brought up under Rule eleven in council, but we will talk about them here first. Uh first four items are all to the same issue. So I'll read those four. And then the second four items are all in the same issue. So I'll read those four. Um I'm assuming that somebody's here to talk about these. I'll see when they're coming and voting back. First one is Consider Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero nine. An ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately point eight seven one acres, more or less located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declared emergency. The next one is Consider Ordinance twenty-three dash ten. An ordinance subjecting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being point eight seven one acres, more or less located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring emergency. This report of interest, I'll let you know that an annexation occurs uh when a property owner requests to be annexed into the city. We have two opportunities to vote on annexation. One is to vote for it. The other is to vote against it. Uh if we vote for it, then we won't need to vote against it. If we vote against it, these next two will become obsolete. But if we vote for it, we'll go over the next two. Let's consider Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-five. A resolution adopting a statement indicating what services, if any, the city of Newark, Ohio will provide for approximately point eight seven acres, more or less located in Newark Township, the territory proposes, or expedited to annexation and declaring emergency. And Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-six, a resolution regarding a buffering zone for the annexation of approximately point eight seven acres, more or less located in Newark Township declared emergency. Mr. Morton, to address the annexation and then services and then buffer zone.
Well, I can dress part of it. Now, like, may I else speak otherwise? But uh this is, this is annexation north end of Lemay Avenue. Uh Lemay dead ends uh as it runs off of uh Goosebumps Road. So there, these are the northernmost lots on the east and west side of Lemay. Uh two residential lots. Uh as I said, one on the east side, one on the left side of Lemay Avenue.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? Are you speaking to all eight? Are you speaking to the second resolution? Take your time.
I'm speaking for the first floor. This is the.
Okay. I thought you were saying there was two lots.
There are two lots.
Okay.
If you look at the map, there are two little two residential lots in this one annexation.
Okay. Okay.
So uh my understanding is that uh this annexation is partly to give city services, specifically water service. And uh uh otherwise I don't, I don't know what other questions you might have.
Questions? And are you, somebody else who speaks about services and buffer zones?
Uh well, the city services are listed on the annex, on the diesel legislation. Pretty nice spelled out on the diesel legislation. And.
And Mr. Chairman. Uh this is in my ward, uh what will be. And just to speak to a little bit, it's not adding any room that we don't already kind of maintain. It's actually an area that is locked inland. Um there's a lot of islands up there at township. Uh this will reduce that somewhat. And actually, then Lemay will be uh completely the city of Newark is what this kind of does. It really doesn't add any distance or anything as far as safety services. Um what it does is it just kind of completes the whole picture in that area right there.
Right. This is a port of reference. The services include police protection, fire protection, emergency medical protection, sanitary sewer water, street maintenance, highway responsibility ordinance, street lighting, and you know. You have other questions or comments on those?
Uh Roger Vilmus mentioned that there was uh, there was an agreement that the city had with the property owners there to provide water service there. They're already tied on the water service. Part of that agreement is that they needed to annex into the city.
Clear enough? You got other questions, comments?
Well, I see a lot of new people here. What is Rule eleven?
So Rule eleven is when we want to push something. Well, I'll look at tomorrow.
Yeah, Rule eleven is when something needs to be expedited and it does not have time to go through committee. So there has to be be an agreement between the Majority Leader and the President of Council in order to bring it uh right onto council floor in order to vote on it the same day. How about you?
All right. Anything else? Good question.
Rachel Bowman Smith, thank you. Um two thirty-seven by the sword. Um that's I, um no, that area, there's an awful lot of of um homes that are on septic um and private waters. Um is most of that area being changed gradually to um uh city services?
Well, like I said at the beginning, that's up to the option, but that option is that that up the way.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Um if there are city services uh in front of the house or behind the house, it is required to of a citizen to hook up to the system. Uh the ones that are not currently hooked up are township still. There are a few, most, some of those roads have islands in there and those are the ones that are still on septic. Uh but if city services are available and or if a septic fails, then they're required to because the EPA is requiring all of them to either bring it up to code and you can't do that with the amount of land um that these property owners have because of the acreage and the, it is required. So therefore, any of them that have had access to it have hooked up.
I know an awful lot of um the properties around there have trees that would be interfering with any septic systems in existence. And that's part of the reasons my question, um more with area. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, because that's coming up under Rule eleven. Uh there'll be no votes. Uh the second batch. We consider ordinance twenty-three dash eleven, an ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately two point zero three five acres, more or less located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declared emergency. After that is ordinance twenty-three dash twelve, objecting to the annexation, twenty-three dash thirty-seven, adopting statements indicating what services will be provided, and twenty-three dash thirty, excuse me, twenty-three dash thirty-eight uh regarding the buffer zone. More.
Yeah, so the location of this annexation is on Mount, Mount Vernon Road, known as Cardinal Electric. Is that's the petitioner and the owner. So it's uh north of, north twenty-first street, south of Gregory Drive on the west side of Mount Vernon Road. Uh they own two parcels. Uh one parcel runs on on Mount Vernon Road. The other parcel is just adjacent to it at the rear. Those are the two parcels proposed for annexation into the city. Uh what their specific reason is, I don't, I don't uh know that there's any utility issues. I really don't know and have not been in any conversation with that property owner.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this also will be part of my award. Uh anytime we can annex commercial properties, it's already commercial. It's a clean site uh and bringing tax revenue into our community. I think it's definitely something we want to welcome. And uh I welcome these folks that are into our community and support this annexation.
Anything else? Anybody else? Uh Mr. Morton, I don't know. Before you leave. All right, as I said, that'll be going out to council through Rule eleven. We'll have another reading in that then. Up next, we'll consider Resolution twenty-three dash forty. A resolution authorizing directing the Director of Public Service to participate in the ODOT winter contract zero one eight dash two four for road salt declared emergency. He's creating an emergency in the spring for road salt.
It is amazing. Yes, uh so that just put these, put this piece of uh uh put their annual bid request out. Uh they need the uh legislation and the amount of salt that we wish to purchase for next year by May third. So in order to do that, we need to do it as an emergency. Uh this is quite usual every year, same thing type of situation. Uh this year, I spoke, spoke with Buster, the street department, gonna request one thousand tons uh for the coming year. We've been uh uh have a little bit of carryover from the, from the current year to one thousand tons should uh put us into the through the following, the next year, hopefully. It's hard to predict what the weather will be.
Sure. Any questions, comments from the committee?
Second.
Motion by Barker. There's a blind. Questions bound to the audience. Seeing none, all those in favor pass the assignment council signify by saying aye. I all pose a sign. The pass will vote by zero. Up next is twenty-three has forty-one, a resolution authorizing directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and entering into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for various construction projects.
Sir, so we've got uh one, two, three, four, five, six project listed on there. Uh our street maintenance projects uh which we are putting together the hits for that right now. Going through the streets and they're on it down to match the funding that we've got. Uh the second project will be concrete maintenance, which will be so curbs inside, curb ramps and sidewalks. Uh again, we're putting that together as we, as we speak also. The third project is a combination of two projects on Waterworks Road and Horns Hill Road. We're just, we're designing a roundabout at that location. And uh through the uh water department, we're also uh also, we are, but a uh a consultant is designing a uh spillway to the dam up there. Because of the proximity of both of those, they both need to be uh kind of done together. So our plan is to build both at the same time. And uh plans are uh well underway for that and we expect to did it in the fall and then construct it next spring was with, with it completed by the end of next summer. Uh fourth project is Waterworks Road Bridge repairs. There's some repairs needed to the bridge. So what we're trying to do is while the road is closed down for the roundabout, being in a position to be able to do repair to the bridge at the same time, which is the decent there. So we will uh move forward with that. Uh fifth project is uh small drainage projects through our stormwater utility. We're just building the project that we put together from last year. Uh we anticipate uh that we may be able, have to put another project up a bit later this year. So we're gonna have the ability to do that with legislation. And then the sixth project is uh Berlin Lane Waterline Replacement. This is a project through the water department to replace uh uh water line on Berlin Lane, basically from about Londondale Parkway North. So any questions? I'll try to answer them. Questions from.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. See, we're working on the street list. Ballpark when? We'll see a list.
Uh two, three weeks.
Thank you.
Why can't I talk about streets? I'm sorry. Ramps and sidewalks. I know we have a project already scheduled with funded for West Main Street, for the forth street.
We have it funded. We don't have it scheduled yet. We gotta finish tonight.
Who is funding?
It's uh, yeah, mostly.
Okay, so how far we?
Uh I would say we're still probably a few months away from getting that thing out to bed. We got this little bridge project down in the west end. It's kind of taken a higher priority, so.
There's no one else, no one, so what?
Yeah. I wasn't allowed to say that.
I could ask it all. I haven't got the reach otherwise.
Yeah.
Yes. Although it looks pretty. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, since three of these projects are my award, I make a motion.
Motion by Marmy, said by Harris.
Thank you for the good news uh about West Main Street. Last week, on our way back when, uh not, I know it wasn't last week, the last, um on our way back to from um last meeting that we went to here. Um we encountered some people on West Main Street um in my neighborhood. Um on crutches and with two, uh two people joining this one guy on crutches, um having to walk in the street um with groceries. Um and I, I, it just seems so important to have an area that um covers a lot of groceries for a lot of people. A lot of people happen, uh go on wheelchairs and and crutches and and by foot um to get the groceries at at Dollar General. Um and yet there aren't a lot of sidewalks um on Main Street.
Did you have a question?
Um I did want to say that I Um, I did want to say that I'm thrilled that funding is going to be made for that. Also was absolutely thrilled to see that the city is working on Forty Street again and it looks really good. The sidewalks are wide enough for a wheelchair. That, there's one really difficult area that they're working on now. But it was nice to see. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing this on the council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. That motion will pass for the vote of five to zero. That concludes the service committee meeting for this evening and also concludes our committee meetings for this evening.